All right, now being seven, six o'clock. We'll call the May 30th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. And I'd like to start by saying this meeting is being recorded for Cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. All right, do we have any new agenda items? Mr. Traynor?
Rants and raves.
Rants and raves, yes. Okay, would you like to add that to the agenda with a little explanation?
One of the programs I watch at the end of each, it's a news program, they do rants and raves, and that's the way they end their meeting.
Okay.
And I think it's a good idea that maybe we should be doing, hopefully more raves than rants, but very briefly, and that's the way we'll close it.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, so we'll add that and we'll see how it works out for us.
If we get run out of time, we can always stop.
Exactly. Okay, we do not have any meeting appointments tonight. Why don't we just start on the agenda and just work our way down?
Sure.
So Dale will be in here, hello, to take minutes. We just called things to order, Dale.
I'm gonna take the brief seat tonight.
Okay.
Sure.
Perfect. Okay, so first item is the consultant for fire and EMS. John, did you have anything you wanted to report on that?
Yeah. So we've had, we've talked to the Collin Center. I've made contact with municipal resources, and they're gonna come in June 12th and do a presentation, I would assume similar to what Collin Center did.
Perfect.
I have not been able to find a third one. I've looked at the newsletter that comes out from the, I think it's Department of Revenue, is it?
Mm-hmm.
And the ones that are listed in there are actually, in effect, recruiting from their own pool. And what I was really impressed by with the Collin Center, and I think Municipal Resources does the same, is the process to get there. So I'm hoping out of those two, we can find a good fit.
Okay, and that is on the, what date did you say?
June 12th.
June 12th.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay.
Yeah.
Six twelve, six o'clock, okay. Next is consultant, town administrator?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I just did town administration.
Okay, so that was town administrator, I thought that was.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. And then fire EMS, we're still working on getting?
So I've talked to three different consultant groups. One is the Carlson Group. I got their name because they were awarded a grant by the state when they did the town of Southampton. And looking at what they did, it was very similar to what we're asking, comprehensive study. The other one is the Matrix Consulting Group. This came out of, I sent a note to Tom Calder and his secretary Betty. Betty, as usual, is great. She came back, she surveyed the local town managers, and Matrix was one of the companies that was recommended. The last one is one that Dale originally recommended, and since then, others have said how highly they thought of him. Ernest Horn.
Okay.
He was, he did a survey at the end of the first ambulance study we did.
2012.
So all three are supposed to get me something this week, a proposal on how they might address what we're doing.
Okay. So you had Matrix, we have Ernest Horn.
And Carlson Group.
And Carlson Group. And they're all gonna give you a...
Some sort of a proposal to say, this is how we would approach it, and then we can call them in.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, Ernest. Great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, update on Exchange Server and upgrades?
Yes, Barbara Gomez, myself, met with Michael Rodriguez today to go over the Exchange Server, the printer and the screens. So Michael is going to pull together a proposal for the Exchange Server software and data backup. That amounted to about $9,200 in our proposal that we gave to the state. So we've already got approved, I think it's 14-2. He's also, I sent out a note to the different departments asking for their replies on what we needed for a printer, and it was all over the map. But basically, it seems to be that most people are saying, we don't need one for the large documents, planning documents. And there's some question whether we need a high-volume color printer at all, whether we could use something less expensive, almost a desktop. So Michael is going to, I've asked him to sit with the department heads and the administrative assistants and just go through that, make sure we haven't missed anything. And then he'll come back and make recommendations as to what we should do for a printer. And the other thing he'll look into is leasing versus buying. We put in the grant for buying because the state was gonna pay for it if they gave us the grant. But since that doesn't make sense now, it seems leasing would be the much better option. So he'll give us some feedback on that. So I would expect over the next couple of weeks, we'll kind of close in on this. The Exchange Server, we'll do right away because the money was approved in the special town meeting. The other piece of it is the workstations. There were seven workstations and a laptop. The PCs we have now are, they're over 10 years old in some cases, it's, they're outdated, can't even do Word updates. So he's going to go through those and give us a list of who gets what. And those, once we decide to say, okay, let's go forward, that'll start July 1st, once the new money, new budget's in place. Assuming, you know, we've got the money, so.
Okay.
So that's where we stand on those.
Are we, we're leasing the copiers we have now, aren't we?
Yes.
But it's not through Michael Rodriguez?
No, it's on your sheet, you...
Yeah, it's a separate, another company, independent company, I forgot the name offhand.
Should we get a price from them, too?
Well, I would imagine when he comes back and determines what you want or what you need, they'd be in the bidding.
Perfect, okay.
Right, yeah, no, I don't see him doing that. I think just what Dale said, once we get the parameters straight. Plus, the one in the other room that's used by the Conservation Commission, because they meet in there, and it's having its hiccups, so we need to address that one because the high-volume one is locked up at night, so they can't get to it. So they're using this one.
That's the one that's in the treasurer's collector's office?
Yes, that's locked up.
Okay. And the one that you're referring to is the one that was in our old meeting room?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
One of the suggestions I had made earlier would be where the copier is now, in the treasurer's office, to physically put a wall in that room, a wall off straight across, and that way, there, that would become its own room, and it could be copier, machine, postage machine, and it wouldn't interfere with the treasurer's office at all, it would just remain locked. It's really easy fix, it's not a very big wall, 12 feet or whatever it is, and it's already got its own door, so, you know, it would be pretty inexpensive to do that.
It'd be nice for accessibility with everybody else.
And that way, there you have a room that everybody could get in, it'd be a key for that as well, but I mean, everybody could get into and use, rather than having stuff all over the building.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, yeah, does to me, too.
Yeah, once we get the Rodriguez thing back, we should take a look at that.
Okay. All right, discussion of light control letter support to Southeast Regional Office of Business Development. All right, I reached out to Maria, and I told her that, you know, we certainly support the project, but that we cannot offer any tax incentives at the time, you know, is it still, do you still want a letter? And what she responded was a brief explanation of why the town was not able to consider incentives, and an explanation of the importance of the project, company to the town would be useful. So that's all she's looking for. So do you want me to draft something, run it by you guys?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
They'd be great.
And she wanted it by the 10th, I believe, of June. So I'll get cracking on that one. All right, establishment of department liaisons. We briefly talked about this last week, and you had put together a really nice list, Mark, much more comprehensive than the list I put together. So what do you want to do? You want to just go down the line and...
Sure.
I mean, some of these are already, have already kind of been assigned, just the people that have been working with them.
Why don't we put in the ones that are already assigned, so we can see.
Okay.
Because I started to sign up for stuff, and then I realized I was taking everything.
You already got a lot of stuff! All right, so fire is you, right, John?
Fire, yes.
Okay.
And I would say information technology.
Your IT as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other one I'd like to work with Barbara more on is the finance.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you guys agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna put you in for that. Where's your interest?
Well, I think, we talked last week that I would do police, I'm glad to do that. I'm glad to sit in on the public safety meetings, building meetings. Kind of interested in Concom stuff, so I'd be willing to be involved in that. And then the schools are the biggie, I know you've had...
I'd like to do the schools, if you guys don't mind that.
No, that's great.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we still have got building department, the clerk, is that the town clerk? Or is that...
Yeah, I meant that as town clerk, just that part of, that part of the building.
Okay. And then the finance committee, for our big ones.
I'd take the finance.
All right, do you want me to take building?
Sure, I would think building and planning, and there's one, there was missing zoning.
Yeah, and that, they fit together.
Okay, well, those would all be Mark then, if we want to kind of keep it...
Mark's in?
You. I mean, because it's planning, oh, no, we don't have you down for planning.
We don't.
Is it too much? I mean, that's...
That is a lot.
Yeah.
Or I can do building, planning, because you're doing conservation.
Building, planning, and zoning sort of fit together.
Building, planning, and zoning, okay.
So you're doing those, Kristin?
Yeah, I can do those, and then we still have got town clerk and finance committee.
No, I took finance, didn't I?
Yeah, we're putting finance committee as part of finance.
Okay, so the whole thing, the whole, okay, okay, perfect. All right, so then we just have town clerk, and that's it, right, town clerk?
Yeah.
I'm fine to do that, too, I mean, doesn't matter to me.
Maybe it goes, it goes along with the IT piece.
It does go a lot with the IT.
Certainly Tara is skilled in IT, so I'd be talking to her anyways.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. All right, that sounds good.
So I just, the, not smaller or lesser, but that second list, I didn't even know if we felt like we needed to actually assign or not, but...
Well, I would say border health and bylaws certainly are going to...
Yeah, they're, absolutely.
Yeah, we need some sort of liaison, just so they know that we've got it.
And I mean, I'm willing, I'm willing to do bylaws, but I, you know, if there's special interest, please take it, it's more a function of service.
Okay. Well, I mean, this is, this is a lot. I don't know how far you want to go with, or maybe just some of these. Like, I can take Frank, I'll do the animal control.
Okay.
Okay. I'd take the Stark Society, I've been doing that anyways.
Okay.
All right. And I'll take, I'd like the garden club.
Okay.
When I retire, that's, I want to be the mulch sprayer.
There you go. I'll take highway.
Okay.
What else did you just take? Which one did you just take?
Historic.
I didn't get highway on there?
Yep, highway's on there, under garden club.
Yeah.
And historic district, I guess, I don't know. I mean, some of these, I don't know how much we're gonna interact anyways, but...
I'd take historic district and historical commission, unless you wanted commission.
No, no, that's fine, take those, okay.
All right, and I'm working on the housing plan, and I'm on Old Colleen Planning Council.
Yeah.
I'll take open space, because I sit in a lot of those.
I can take library, if you want.
Which one?
Library.
All right, you're gonna take library?
If you want, I mean...
And you know what, I'd actually like council on aging, I'd like to establish a newer relationship with that.
Council on Aging, all right, you're gonna take that one.
And Community Preservation Committee, probably.
Okay.
Be handy here, anyway.
All right, who's gonna do bylaws? Who's doing planning? Me. Okay, so that's me. I mean, that would make sense, wouldn't it?
Which one?
Because I'm already doing planning board to do the bylaws.
Okay.
Okay, so I can do bylaws. What else do we have down there at the bottom?
Border Health we have still.
Oh, border health? I can take the board of health.
Okay. Agricultural, I would...
I'd take that one.
Yeah, that makes sense, if you're doing garden anyways. Cultural, you said you're taking that, Mark, or is that council on aging you're taking, right?
He's taking council on aging.
No, council on aging, I'd like, cultural council...
What is cultural council?
I, I don't, I hope I don't misspeak, I think they're only meeting once a year, and honestly, I don't remember what they're doing.
I'd be glad to do it, just because I don't know what they're doing.
I know what they used to do.
There you go.
Yeah, they used to get grants and kind of put down...
How about Community Preservation Committee?
Oh, you're gonna take that one, aren't you, Mark?
Yeah, well, yeah, I probably, I do sit in on some of those.
Okay. I don't know if we have a report from the cultural...
Recreation?
I can do recreation.
Okay. Tree warden?
Why don't I do tree warden, because it's kind of, you know, building and, I can do that, I'll take tree warden.
And veterans?
Actually, I'm glad to take veterans.
Okay, that does it.
Perfect.
Cool.
Awesome, thank you. All right, great. So what we can do is have Bree send these, send an email out to everybody and let them know that, who their point of contact is, if they have issues that they need to have trust. Perfect, all right.
Great.
That was fast. All right, discussion of board goals for coming year. Do you want to start? You have the first one with your paper out.
That's the trouble with being even...
It's right if you're fast!
Well, I had more comments than anything else, and I, you know, in truth, at one of the most sincere moments I ever saw him, John Henry somewhere along the way during fairly tough time, looked over at me and said, you know, you cannot do it all, you have to pick your stuff. And if there's anything, as I started thinking about priorities and even looking at liaisons, is how much work we have already cooking.
Oh my gosh, we've got a lot, this would be a busy year.
If anything, this felt to me like we have to narrow this down and keep it under control, especially until the town administrator comes. And as far as I'm concerned, in thinking about priorities, that is by far number one. Everything else, I feel like, much of everything else flows out of getting the right person established there and going. The other things I had on my list are the police station, I saw the IT, and financial stuff is really important, the promoting of volunteerism, and then sort of the, sort of broad, slightly nebulous, but really important thing, maybe it's the thing that informs all the other decisions, or trying to maintain the unique character of the town. And then the last one I put on my list, because something's gonna come up that will be big, that will consume a lot of our time, that we don't even know about yet, and so, you know, just saving enough energy and resources to be able to hit that, so. So I didn't have those really organized in any particular order, other than town administrator just being paramount.
Yeah, I had the same, I had that, and the police building. These are really kind of active projects that we will be involved with, but not all of them will be super hands-on with the police station, we're gonna be busy with the IT, we've got the Dennett water treatment system that's on the horizon. What I did want to try to get done this year was that housing production plan, that's something that I'd like to finish this year. And then, also, I wanted to look, after we had a town administrator on board, about the possibility of creating a social media policy, and possibly getting more active in social media through the town administrator, you know, they would be responsible for doing the posting, and they may have ideas about that as well. So those are really the only two things that I have, that are kind of outside of the major projects that we've got going, is to, we're gonna work on those, because I think we do have a lot on our plate. What do you have, John?
I had kind of five broad overviews. I had six, but permitting, I think we've solved, so. Financial, just moving through the change when the town administrator comes on, and the budgeting and the reporting. Technology, the whole idea, first the Exchange Server, we solved some of the in-house staff problems, and then where do we go with that? Volunteerism, which started to think about, and kind of with everything that came at us, it's just kind of dropped off, it needs to be brought back to be one of the top ones. I'll talk about that after. And then the economic development, I think, is part of the financial, it's kind of dispersed. One of the things, when we were talking, we were talking about the industrial park, and I had reached out to John...
Maury.
Yes. And he said he was gonna come in and talk to us, and I think it's just dropped off his radar, and maybe I need to go out and talk to him again, because certainly we'd like to know what's going on there, and see if anything can be done. The grant piece, Colleen was in touch with a lady, I don't know if she mentioned...
Yes, that was a great email that she sent, she's always working for the town!
Right. So this lady is a teacher at Northeastern University in grants, how to do it. And so I got on YouTube and took a look, and sure enough, there's one of our lectures, an hour lecture on how to go after grants.
Really?
It's just amazing. I mean, she is really good, now, I don't know if she's gonna be interested in, but Colleen's reaching out to her. And maybe through her, we can find, if not her, somebody else that would help us, but she's the expert. I mean, once you watch that video, you know.
Interesting.
Yeah, I'll send you the links, and you can take a look. But grants is something we need to solve, we need to be doing more and more.
There's a lot of money out there.
There's a lot of money, and we're not in the queue.
And I think just our smallness makes us kind of unique, and makes a really nice story, and someone like an academic would look at this as not the same old thing in the same old town, and should be attractive.
We got a lot, we got a good story, we were the first community compact town in the state, we're a green community, we've been doing all this solar work, we've got a couple of grants with the Collin Center...
Oh, we've got that capital stabilization that we're paying for the police station with, which is amazing!
We've got a good story, you're right. We need to figure out how to package it up and go after some monies.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's great. All right, so do we want to kind of narrow it down?
So is that, you had five, you said, so financial, technology, volunteerism, grants...
Well, I had economic development, but I, so I got four, because talking to John Maury is...
Okay.
So that sounds pretty similar, I mean, we all, we all had town administrator right at the top.
I think we're all kind of on the same, right?
We know we have financial stuff, we know we have technology stuff, the police station, the volunteerism.
Okay, all right.
So what do you want to do with this? I mean, do you...
I think we need to come up with an action plan, how we're gonna...
Approach it?
How we're gonna approach it. I think we should maybe divide this, like we have, with liaisons, and take ownership of a particular item, and...
I think they almost follow the liaisons, in a sense, I mean, police, public safety, building, you know, that's all gonna wrap up in...
One way that it doesn't get lost, and we'll talk about this later, maybe when we go back to the parking lot, is even just a brief update each week, and just going down the list each week, and it may well be, or each meeting, it may well be that some meetings, nothing new's happened, but that way, throughout the year, we're just...
We're talking about it.
We're talking about it, we're remembering that their priorities, because we'll surely get lost with, you know, all of this stuff along the way.
Okay, all right, so we've got financial, what's happening with our finances, what else do we have?
Technology.
Technology, okay, IT, technology.
Volunteerism.
Which is, is big, volunteerism, okay.
Grants.
Grants, yep.
Public safety, I think, is...
Yeah, public safety, building, and town administrator, until those get done.
Okay.
I would put public safety as one, because it also includes fire.
Yes, it does, which is an issue, okay.
Yeah, that's good. That's good, because that, other than school, that one's just the biggest financial issue.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we've got the six then, financial, grants, IT technology, volunteerism, public safety, and town administrator. Okay, all right, so those will be what we're working on this year.
Piece of cake, right?
Yeah, absolutely, check and check.
So next week, we'll go down the list of the six?
We'll go down the list, yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
And then, I don't know, in the meantime, if you want to think about, you know, come up with some ideas about how to tackle these, or what we can do to try to increase volunteerism, or, you know, communicating, getting the word out, and it sounds like we've got a good thing on grants.
As part of it is your social policy, you know, that, that's an extension of this, I think.
I think that would be really helpful in getting the word out as to where we need help, and it's pretty immediate, and there's so many people that are on it, I'm not one of them, but it's, it's amazing.
We did, you know, at the start of last year, we talked about, Tara has kind of been doing this, on Plimpton Helping Plimpton.
Plimpton Helping Plimpton, right.
And we talked about Trish Determan being the point person for volunteerism, because so much of it comes into the town clerk anyways. So I think we'd need to just pick up on that, and now put some support, and maybe flush it out what that really means, and how we go forward.
All right, you want, we'll put it on the agenda for next week, and kind of flush it out then? Perfect, okay, sounds good.
Great.
All right, discussion of town council contact policy and protocol. What we had done last year, I think we've actually been doing this for quite a few years, Mark, is that people fill out the form, request time with town council, and the board votes and signs off on it. It's really helped us to reel in our costs and to take control of the line, and I think it's worked well, I'd like to stick with it.
I agree.
I think I instituted that the first year I was selectman. I, my other, and I think it's worked well, and I think it does give us a chance to maybe counsel board members, and how to more efficiently go to town council and get information. The other piece of this that I wanted to talk about is this board going, or the three of us going to town council. I think soon after I became chair, there were some issues about that, and at least one selectman may be abusing it a little bit. And so we did make the policy that the chair would be, or that we would speak among ourselves and approve one of us going, other than in an emergency or a time-sensitive issue when the chair could go. And so I just wanted to make sure that's still our understanding.
That's the way we did it all last year?
That's what we've done, yeah, is we vote to authorize someone with time.
Yeah.
And with you feeling comfortable making a more time-immediate decision.
Right, if something, right, came up that, an emergency. Okay, so do we want to continue with that, with the bylaw review committee, that if they feel like they need time with council, they come to us?
Yeah, as long as they understand, they gotta get in the queue early, so they don't spin their wheels, like the sign, bylaw, where we found out they shouldn't have even started, because town council was gonna come back and say, you know...
And that's the benefit of them coming to us first, is we kind of have our, keep our hand in it as to what they're actually working on.
I just don't want to be a roadblock to them, I think they're so important that, you know, they have to feel, okay, this isn't an impediment, it's actually a help. it's actually a help. Yeah.
Yeah, I hope it's looked at as that and I, you know, it's one of those ones, I think, you sort of alluded to it, there are times that going to town council early is the most cost effective way.
Exactly.
And so I, yeah, I totally agree with that.
All right, well, why don't we continue doing what we're doing? If we find that it's not working, then, you know, maybe instead of an hour, we give them two hours and they, you know, can use it as they, when they need it.
Yep.
Okay.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Sure.
Kent Thompson, Lake Street, acting chairman of the bylaw committee this week. And we did have this discussion about the use of town council early in the process, especially as in our first partial year. And as opposed to coming up as we boil the ocean with dozens and dozens of topics and ideas that we're trying to figure out how to prioritize, somewhere we'd like to run some filtrate of that by town council early in the process, but not necessarily on an individual basis. And the comments of Chair's last meeting, that Alan's chairing it, was we were thinking of maybe a block of town in an hour, in a month, or sorry, in a day. Whatever questions we have, whether it be showing them this month's batch of filtrate from the committee feedback, which I'd also like to comment on the liaison, which is a great program because we too, on the bylaw review committee, have assigned, Alan's assigned committee members of the town to various departments. And I can provide you a list and we can synchronize our list and your list and kind of go arm in arm together.
Good.
And Alan and Dave O'Bertie tried to do, well, they did do it, tried to do with a couple of our first ever trial balloons and unfortunately late in the game with town council. So I guess the request would be to see if we could arrange for a block, a budget, an amount, and if you don't use it, sit some, we don't have to come back, whether it's a monthly or a quarterly or something, as opposed to a weekly, you know, we got three bylaws to run by town council or any other grouping that you may, you know, in working with the, in working with the departments as liaisons from the board and maybe you and the liaisons from the bylaw committee can coordinate what's falling out of the trees in this first year, second year of review.
I think I'd like to sit down, maybe we need a joint meeting because it's not just giving you a block, it's sort of the process for how both bodies know what's going on. Just so that we, you know, I think a block of hours may be the right way to go, something like four hours or eight hours, whatever we decide. But that's just one piece of it. The other piece is how do we know what's going on and how do you guys know what we're thinking? Let's just talk it out and then that will just fall out of it.
There's a reduction, to use a cooking term, of the soup.
Sure.
Down here to a, you know, a condensed version that has to early get processed through town council because if we're going down the wrong path of the thing that we happen to go, it's something we know and refocus our efforts.
And, you know, last year, we spent a lot of time on executive meetings that were all legal based. And one of the things I'm hoping that the bylaw committee solves long-term is that it reduces our time, you know, spent on these issues. Because a lot of it, when you look back and you say, whoa, how did we get here? Just better coordination would have done it.
Yeah, or clarifying where bylaws were ambiguous, yeah.
Right, as we try to categorize issues, we came up with, sort of like your goal setting, we have three categories of things that range from administrative commas, periods and cellos and gremos that have to get fixed to, you know, eliminating existing bylaws and then adding them or rewriting them. And so we have these, all these categories. And within those four categories, the matrix with all the partners and all the boards and all the liaisons. And we're trying to boil the ocean with our department representatives getting pain points. They know better than anybody which bylaws affect their, their lives. They live it every day.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so we're trying to focus. On the other hand, we've also identified that there are some, the boards or departments that don't have bylaws that go to town meeting, which is the current charter that we have, i.e. the board health and CONCOM, I believe, have regulations that they promulgate and don't believe that they regulate them through town meeting. So there was a suggestion on the table at the last meeting to consider focusing primarily or solely on bylaws that are town controlled, town meeting controlled, if not ones that aren't.
That makes sense.
So we're trying to focus our lenses as well as the process for prioritizing the pain points.
When do you want to meet?
First and third, Thursday of the month.
I would push it out a little towards the end of June rather than sooner. Just, because you're gonna go back and you're gonna feedback this meeting. And I think what we want to do is just give some thought of how we make this so it's, it works for both.
Yes, we welcome it. We don't always want to ask, you know, we're organizing ourselves at the same time as you're organizing things you do. And the more we work together, the more we're gonna do, and saving dollars with town council.
Well, we have an appointment, we've got the sixth and the 12th, we've got appointments, but we don't have anything yet on the 19th or 26th. Do you want to pencil in the 26th and let us know?
First and third Thursdays would be standing meetings, so that would be, I don't have the calendars, the 19th, the 3rd, or?
These are Mondays, right?
Yeah, these are Mondays. The 19th would be the 3rd.
You here?
Yeah, can we meet here?
Well, the other, the other way is we could meet with them on a Thursday if.
Yeah, we could meet with you on a Thursday. So you meet the first and 3rd? Yeah, true.
First and 3rd Thursday.
So you meet.
And then there's a, there's a 5th Thursday in June.
It doesn't count. We don't.
Not including. All right, so you're meeting on the 8th and the 22nd?
Yes.
I could do either.
How about the 22nd?
All right, 22nd?
I'll be away the 22nd, but I'm sure you guys.
We'll bring it back. Well, actually, it doesn't give them enough time.
All right, 22nd.
So what time?
You don't want to do the 29th and have an extra meeting in, oh, then you'd have two weeks in a row. No, look at that, look.
Well, I'm just thinking about.
June 22nd, so what time?
For the bylaw, we need a 6:30, but we could.
You want to do like 7? So you guys can get set up?
However, I mean, what we're doing is slogging through the charter and the work.
Seven o'clock.
All right, why don't we go 7 o'clock? So we'll post it.
Yeah.
To meet with you guys. Where do you meet?
Here or there.
All right, why don't, yeah, we'll go the other room then, okay. Okay, so I'll post that. Perfect. No, thank you. Okay, so.
So before we finish on town council, one other question then is our, our point person at K and P now is?
Greg Corbo.
Okay.
Yeah, we, yeah, okay.
Is that for all, or all things?
Greg would handle what Alana handled. We have specialists for other areas, but yeah, for most of the stuff you're doing, Greg would probably be your contact.
Again, I'd be asking.
Perfect.
For ZVA.
All right, so you ready to move on to?
Yep.
All right, so discussion of town coordinator, town administrator, transition planning. That's a big nut.
Dale, you're on vacation from what, the 2nd to the 10th?
Yeah, 2nd to the 10th, 3rd to the 10th, actually, but.
Okay.
3rd to the 10th.
So I was thinking that Mark and I, during the day, we could post a meeting and sit down with Dale when he's back from vacation and just start talking, you know, what's the day today?
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you a list of everything that's in the works and who the contact people are and so on and so forth.
I'd also like to see, you know, like, how, you get everything that comes in, if somebody doesn't know where to go, that most of the stuff is gonna probably go to you or.
Or the town clerk.
Or the town clerk. So, sort of how do we need to think about that, you know? Okay. And so, I don't know, do you have a, a time, a day after the 10th that would work?
Absolutely, almost any afternoon will work or actually mornings later in the week will work as well. Pretty open.
Afternoons are okay for me, except Fridays, and sadly, you said. But, so our Tuesdays are usually.
Do we want to know if Dale's here anyway?
Well, you're here Tuesday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so. I think your calendar is probably the most restricted.
So when are we looking for, next week or the week after?
Well, he's gonna be on vacation.
He's on vacation the 3rd through the 10th.
So the 11th through whatever.
Yeah, so starting the 3rd week in June?
Which is the 12th?
Yeah.
Yeah, 12, okay, yeah.
All right, how about that Wednesday, which is the 14th?
Okay.
I, what time do you get in, Dale, 10 or 11?
Whatever time you guys want to be here, I'll be here.
Why don't, I, just so I have a little cushion, why don't we make it 11, 11 if that's all right?
Sure.
So that's June 11th, or June 14th at 11?
Okay.
Great.
And you guys are just gonna meet in Dale's office?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I guess we should post that.
Yep.
Yep.
I can work with Bree to have that posted for you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. All right, that's a really good start. All right, we had talked to some last year about filming committee meetings and we had sent out a, a little memo and asked for some feedback. And, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I thought we had only heard back from the assessors that they said it would be problematic and Board of Health. But that was really it, wasn't it?
Yes. The assessors said they didn't want to do it because of the nature of their business. The town clerks surveyed town clerks to see whether their assessors were filmed. Not one town filmed their assessors. I think there were probably six, seven that she surveyed. So I think we should just say, okay, we pass on the assessors. Board of Health is elected, they don't feel comfortable yet and that's their purview. So I think it's more about the commissions and boards that we appoint and what we want to do.
And you can't tell it another elected board what to do. Only what you can do is sponsor a bylaw that requires all public meetings or, and then they have to, we have to adhere to the bylaw, but the board of selectmen can't, you can do it to any of the boards that you appoint, no problem at all. I mean, you could, you know, do that. But you may want to consider doing it in the form of a communications bylaw or public disclosure bylaw, or whatever you wanted to call it that way there. You know, everybody's treated pretty much the same way.
So when you say only two boards responded, the question was, do you have objection to being filmed or was the question, do you want to be filmed?
It was, I would like to start filming in April of 2017. If you have any questions or concerns, please let us know.
So only two commented on that, so.
They said no.
They had concerns.
Yeah. So, and we are remembering that we have a certain number of meetings.
Yes.
That are allowed for free.
Yes.
And then after that theoretically.
I think we're well below what we're allowed.
The question is, how would we do it?
Yeah, where do we start?
Yeah, so looking at some of the other towns, and I can't, I can't remember which one it was, what they do is they film everything, okay? And the way they do it is they have a laptop. They just set the laptop up, turn on the camera, film it and shut it down. Now, then they put it up on the, on the website so that you can dial in and say, okay, I want to see the conservation meeting of such and such. And it streams just like with Area 58. So that, that wouldn't necessarily take Area 58 involvement in terms of having a person come in.
Yep.
It's not very high tech, it doesn't look good when you see it, but it works, you know? The film is recorded. Then all we do is pass it over to Area 58 and ask them to post it. And I don't think that would involve the freebies as much.
The expenses for the.
Person, sure.
The technician doing that.
So if we don't have that intermediate.
I guess that would be something, I, I'm glad to check with the executive director and see what he's feeling about that because I don't think any of the other towns are doing that.
I had mentioned to Richard at one point, but it was just kind of an off the cuff discussion.
Well, I'm glad to have that discussion and make sure he's feeling okay with it or, okay.
Yeah, if he'd be willing to post them, because if he's not, then.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm really bad on that kind of technology. Could we post it on our own website, on the town website?
Well, what we do right now, or what we, I think we've done, is we have a link on our website to Area 58.
So, but if Area 58 had a question.
I guess we could.
Yeah.
You know, if we could even skip that step.
There are also services that you can contract on an annual basis where you wouldn't even deal with Area 58 at all. It would just be, you know, they, they put it up, they put the link on your website, they give you the information on how to get it all up there and you just post it there and you could post anything that they do as well. But I think that we're in the area of like $2,500 a year or something like that for the services. There's several different ones out there. Sometimes if you go on a town website and you'll see their meetings posted, you can pick up who they're, who's doing it for them right there.
My initial reaction is to hold off on this a little. Get the town administrator. I would like to see the town clerk involved. It's, in a sense, it's part of our social media.
Right, it is, it would be.
And just, it's not something I would jump, want to jump in until we had a group discussion of a lot of people to say, you know, what are we trying to do? What's the endpoint? Does it make sense? Can you live with this, et cetera?
There is the, I, I'll just blurt this out. I mean, I am totally in favor of transparency. I am not sure that there are on a lot of boards or committees that haven't thought through the implication of how those meetings flow, whether, when things are recorded or not recorded. And it's not that so, anything nefarious is going on, it's just that brainstorming piece, that, that throwing out ideas that tends to get stifled. And I, I, I mean, I wonder if the boards and committees who didn't respond have thought through how the culture of their meetings will change.
I don't know that they have, but the open meeting laws now are almost forcing us to go this route.
Well, you know, what open meeting law is forcing is, you know, the proper agenda and the proper discussion and it, it isn't at the point that we're asking, it is asking for everything to be recorded.
No, it isn't.
And in truth, I, that transparency comes from, the meeting is posted, people can be aware of there's a meeting and they are aware of the agenda and if there's something they're interested in, they are more than welcome to come into the meeting. I mean, we, we, I mean, that is a very substantial level of transparency short of the recording.
I, I'm, I'm not there. I think, once you put in the recording, it's like what we do here. It's amazing the amount of people now who watch either on the TV or stream it down.
Yeah. Actually, I'm impressed with how few people watch. I, you know, on the, on the board of selectman meetings on Area 58, there's a little number there, the number of people that are looked at the recording. It's frequently 10 or 15.
Really?
It's never more than that.
I'm surprised. I would, just from the comments I get around town, but.
Maybe they're watching it on YouTube.
They can, yeah.
Yeah, could be. I mean, I, again, I'm totally in favor of transparency. I just, I do well understand the.
So let's hold off.
Let's hold it, let's hold it, yeah, until we get squared away with the town administrator and regroup and. Well, let's hold it, let's hold it. Yeah, until we get squared away with the town administrator and regroup and talk about it then.
Yeah. Given all we got to do, it's not the first thing we should do.
Yeah, true. Okay, so let's discuss and review the parking lot.
There's a hand up in the audience.
Hello?
Can we back up two items to the joint meeting with the bylaw review committee?
Sure.
As I mentioned, I didn't have a calendar, it's on the, just, you find it in the phone. And the first and the third, Thursday, start with the first.
Okay, so you do start with the first, then?
And so it's not on the 22nd.
Okay.
15th?
I've got Plymouth County Commissioners on the 15th.
But we can always, you know, do something different. I just noticed when I looked.
And June 1st really doesn't give us enough time to get organized.
Yeah.
Well, we could try something in July.
The first Thursday in, or in July, we probably don't have a Board of Selectmen meeting that week. And we'd get horribly bored if we didn't have meetings every night.
Is that...
That would be the 6th.
Does the 6th work?
6th and the 20th, yeah.
All right, well, why don't we, I don't know, that's Fourth of July week, though. There might be people that...
We might have...
Taken off.
...left off the military.
Why don't we go with the 20th? Or no, what did, was that your next time, the 20th?
Well, that's two, one, two, three, maybe, um...
I'll be away on that one, but you guys certainly can handle it.
Yeah, because I'm just not sure when, if I'm going to be around on the Fourth of July. Would it be possible to meet on the 22nd, even though it's not a regular Thursday night for you guys?
Possibly.
Could you meet, instead of meeting on the 15th, meet on the 22nd instead?
Possibly. We're meeting Thursday night. We can take a vote and abstain to it for now, and then get back to the next week.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Yeah, if you can't do it, then I would say that we meet on the Board of Selectmen's night.
Okay.
Switch to that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, let's shoot for the 22nd then. Okay, that sounds perfect. Okay, so I had sent you guys both copies of the parking lot, and it was, we've actually addressed a lot of these issues that we had for May and June, which is terrific. So we had already discussed Center Street last week. We're working on hiring the town administrator consultant. We're also doing the search for the Fire EMS consultant. We addressed the gun range complaint, and there was a cease and desist that was ordered by the building inspector. Both the Silver Lake and the Denit School Union contracts, I believe both have been signed, so those are in effect. Next, we've got response to requests for residents' email addresses to add to town informational mailings. I thought we were working on that with Tara, weren't we?
Yeah, but, and this is part of the volunteerism, in a sense, and I think it's just, it's something we want to do, but we need to have a little more...
Okay.
Thinking about how we try to attract that.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
Is that part of the broader question about website support from others? I noticed today, I was looking for something, is a list of official police officers, and it's still as barbarly as...
Yeah. We've got to get the departments to clean up their, their part, their segment of it.
Do they have access to it where they can?
Well, they can go through Tara. I mean, she's willing to do it, but she's not going to go in and figure out.
No, nor should she have to.
No.
All right.
So that's probably something we want to put a little memo out about, you know, please review the website segments.
Well, your pages. Review your own pages.
Review your own pages and make sure they're up to date.
Okay. That's not what this was about, though, Ken. This was trying to get information out, to get email addresses. So when Tara does an email blast, that she's sending it to as many people as possible and trying to get people to sign up. So, work in progress.
Yep.
Is that related to the directory that is on the website that doesn't have...
I don't think so.
...virtually any contacts in the contacts?
I don't think it's related to the website at all. Is it?
No, I mean, it's really asking residents to sign up...
Okay, so it's a blast?
Yeah, so it's an email blast.
Right.
I guess, not to beat a dead horse, but while we're looking at the website and departments, their own contacts and their own emails are, I don't know, are just so woefully...
Sure. That's what we were just talking about. We've got to get everybody to update their stuff.
Yeah. Why don't we put it on the agenda for next week?
My own personal agenda would be to also have a picture of every person who's on there. I think the, when residents go to the website, they ought to be able to see who's on Conservation, who's on, you know? You used to have it for the Selectmen.
Oh, we don't have it anymore?
No.
That was a terrible picture.
Yeah, but that's all right.
But it's no longer there.
Anyways, that's my person, that's a rant on a rave.
All right. Oh, hold on, see, you jumped the gun. Hold it, you got to hold that. All right, we had started talking about Tax Title Land. Looks like we're waiting for Colleen to complete the process. So, that's still in process. And what about meeting with the auditors, with Barbara?
Actually, Barbara got the final audit statements today, I believe, and she had a copy for each of us.
Okay.
So they're probably in our, I didn't realize Bree was, she gave them to Bree.
Okay.
So next, next meeting.
Okay. So we'll put that one on the agenda to set up a time to have the auditors come in and talk to us? Or Barbara to come in and talk about the report?
First Barbara, and then, yeah, I would like to hear the auditors, too.
All right, so website, and we'll put that on the next agenda. Okay. All right, ongoing, the Maple Street Group Home, that project is still in the works. Carver Urban Renewal Project, we're waiting for reviews now, and I'll just stay, try to stay in the loop with that. We'd worked on setting our goals, so we're done with that. Looks like summer, early autumn, our insurance, we need to review our insurance plans prior to renewal date?
Yeah, I see you asked Barbara for that. That's good. So we've got a list that we can work on.
Yeah, we've got a list of all the, when the contracts expire. All right, Technology Grant, we were awarded that.
Yeah, so that's...
Terrific, $16,000. The Rural School Aid proposal, I can't remember what this is.
I can't either.
Oh, I do.
You do?
I know, no idea.
Nope, okay.
No, there was, it was something where, I think it was state, but it might have even been federal, was coming forward to saying, there were towns that were classified as rural by, I think it was done by population, that we could have qualified. So there was potentially, somehow it was going to allow us, I think, more money, but I'm not sure.
All right.
I'm not sure, I think we need to, you remember that, Dale?
I do vaguely, but I think, as I remember it, there was reason we didn't qualify.
That may be...
We were size right, but I think we were too rich.
I think that is true.
If I remember correctly.
Do you want to take a look at that?
Not unusual.
For next week?
What is the name?
It's Rural School Aid.
Rural School Aid.
It was, I remember it was a written document that we received.
Yeah, it does kind of sound, Rural School Aid. So we'll talk about that one next week. Okay, and then DPW Projects Update, we had asked for rusted guardrails. I'm not sure how we made out with that?
We didn't.
Okay.
The only thing I was going to do was send a note to Tom Calder and ask him. And Jim Mokee, the Highway Superintendent, pushed back a little bit to say, you know, just make sure you don't lose the grant.
Yeah.
Okay, because it's like $200,000, $250,000.
Okay.
But we'll see.
All right. And then, we had talked about the Town Administrator Screening Committee, which we'll do after we get the consultant on board.
Right.
The Economic Development Committee, I think we've got a little bit of work to do before we could establish them.
So what are we talking there?
It would be establishing an economic development committee to try to promote business growth in Plimpton and possible parcels that would be available. A lot of other towns have this.
Yeah. It's wrapped up with John Norrie, to a great extent, but, okay.
Yeah, and Old Colley Planning Council could help us with this, too.
Okay, good.
But, you know, this, I think, might be more of a down-the-road...
Yeah.
...type thing. Okay, we had talked about the possibility of having alternative legal support. We were going to check around with other towns, see who they use?
Yeah, nice suggestion. Maybe we talk to Rich Bowen. Do you know Rich Bowen?
Yeah.
He was...
I didn't work with him, but I remember him well from town meetings, and I like, I liked the way he, I liked the way he did things.
He was very pragmatic. And I thought at times, you know, it's not a slur on Copelman Page at all. It's just that every once in a while, you want to, another opinion.
Well, sometimes you need a second opinion.
Yeah. So you want me to reach out to him?
Could you?
Sure.
Yeah. Would you be okay with that, Mark? Reach out to him? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so that'd be perfect. So Rich Bowen. Okay, and we're still working on combining services. We had, we've been in discussion with Halifax about the Animal Control Officer. We received a grant from OCPC. I don't think it really helped a whole lot with shared services. Fire EMS, we'll know more when we get the consultants.
Yes, I think after the consultant is in, then we, the second stage is to reach out to Halifax.
And IT, we looked at possibly sharing an IT person, and these might be things that are down the road, you know, as we start to get more IT in the building. Maureen and Jason Frazier had requested a community roundtable discussion with us, I think, just to talk about issues and budgets and all of that. I mean, we had talked about getting together before the budget season, but it never happened.
No.
This might be something we want to try again.
I think we should reach out, but I think they should give us a little more depth on what exactly...
What do you want to talk about?
Yeah, so we just don't get everybody in the room and sort of free-love.
Okay. Well, we're going to be meeting with Jason next week, so we can...
Okay, good.
...talk to him about it then and see what they want to do. All right, volunteer list. I don't know if we have a list of volunteers.
I, I don't know. I think Tara might have something, but I'm not sure it's all-inclusive.
Okay. And maybe we should get a list of volunteer opportunities together as well. And we can talk about that next week. Master Plan for Plimpton, that's...
I don't even know, really, what that does or what, is it just a document we have to file? Or is it actually something that's going to help?
It's pretty elaborate, all-inclusive.
It's usually gone through the Planning Board primarily, and it affects your zoning, and it's usually revisited on a semi-annual or five-year basis.
Yeah, like a five-year basis.
And also puts you in line for other grants that may be out there, if you have a master plan in place, you know, that you qualify for. It's not a bad idea, but then again, sometimes it can be, you know, it's difficult. It's really, well, it is, it's a lot of work. As a matter of fact, it usually costs on the order of like, you know, for a small community, $10,000 to do it, you know, because there's other studies, there's a lot of background information you have to compile, and then...
So who, if you were going to do this, who would you have in the room to talk, to discuss this, you know, among our own boards?
Well, you'd have a master plan committee, you'd have Planning Board.
So you'd have a representative from each other?
Yeah.
Okay.
That might be one that, and this may be a long way off, but this combining services with other towns is potentially sharing a planner.
Big, that'd be a big asset to this town to have, have a planner that you can pick up the phone and call, you know, and they're too expensive to do individually, but, small towns, but I think Mark's exactly right. If you had somebody that you could, similar to what we do with our health agent, you know, share, pretty much with Halifax, and, you know, and it, so we get it on a per diem basis or whatever.
Maybe we should talk to him.
Really works out a lot better. I mean, you may want to think about going down the line for a, for a master plan, you know, but again, it's a really comprehensive document to do, and it usually takes a year, 18 months to put one together. But it gives you kind of a direction of where you want to go.
Right, where we want to go.
It also delineates what's going to be what in the future. It can be revisited, and they are, they, actually, they're required to be revisited, but it, but they, at least it sort of aims the gun, you know, you can, down the road, and it's something for people to work with in the future.
It would seem like we've got pieces done, in the sense, Open Space Committee does a five-year plan.
I think they have a, Open Space has a master plan.
Right. So pieces would kind of fit into it. You could almost, you know, have segments.
Mm-hmm.
But we have a lot on our plate. I mean, how do you want to approach this?
Maybe not this year, but something to keep on the horizon and to talk about with the town administrator when we get them on board.
The other towns, regionalizing.
Yeah, you know, maybe we talk about this again in the fall.
Yep.
Okay. All right, Merchant Services and Mobile Credit Card Processing Solutions. How would this be useful in Plimpton? Looks like we had an email from you a long time ago about this.
This came up when, oh, I know what it was, it was the software that Michael Rodriguez, we wanted to get some software. And we went to get it, but the company wouldn't take, they wouldn't bill us. They wanted a credit card. And so then the question came up, should we have a town credit card, and some discussion that says, no, that's, you probably don't want to do that. But I did reach out to see if any other towns did it, and I just happened to stumble that Duxbury was implementing this. I didn't go any further, because we just kind of left it in abeyance. And I'm not even sure we need it, but I can go back and see if Duxbury did do it.
Well, we could hold this until we get the town administrator, too.
Yeah, I think that's wise.
Okay. All right, very good.
One comment about parking lot in general, and I'm not lobbying for anything, but I think there was some misunderstanding last year somewhere along the way, when we put the parking lot as part of the agenda. And I, since I was the one that initiated the parking lot, it was intended not to be an entree to bring up subjects each week or to circumnavigate open meeting law. It was really, literally a parking lot to remember stuff that had come up that at some future time, we would put on the agenda.
You want to talk about?
Yeah, exactly.
Perfect.
And in any event, I think it's being used exactly the way we intended, stuff that we didn't want to lose along the way and kept working on.
You don't mind a minority opinion? Because we had this discussion a lot, but I seem to have lost, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Enough, okay, I understand.
Good, all right. And it's doing exactly what it's supposed to do in what we just did, so...
Yeah, that you review it occasionally, make sure you're on track, mark off what you've done, and...
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, so, no appointments. Dale, do you have a report for us? What, Ken?
I was told appointments were in correspondence, and I have appointments in the first item in the first...
Oh, sure, okay.
Okay, we need that kind of appointments, as versus appointments at a time of day. Do you want to, you want to...
I'm sorry, appointments, appointments for the board to attend, or appointments...
No, appointments that people have set up to schedule with us.
Shall we go to that?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Well, let's, let's do it while we got...
Well, we can do it while you're here.
Yeah.
All right, so in correspondence is a letter from Ken as Chair of ZBA, recommending Dave Alberti to be transitioned from an alternate to a full member until June 30th of 2019, for Harry Wakel to be named the first alternate until the same date, and for Mark Gabriel to become the second alternate, again, to the same date.
My second.
Second, yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay.
And I should recognize Art for his recruiting efforts.
Yeah, you've got a fine list.
Yeah. So that, that fills you up now?
Yes, for now.
Excellent.
And with no more Selectmen to hire.
Good.
Perfect. All right, so we'll sign these and...
I'm glad to see Mark back involved, too.
I, forgive me, I forgot, I signed on the top line. I know usurping.
I do not. Slut the little...
I got one or two things.
All right, well, do you want to move on to Dale and...
We have one more appointment if we want to stay...
All right, why don't we do the, okay, all right.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up. So now that we are on appointments, this is a letter from Bree. As Chair of the Memorial Day Commemoration Committee, I would like to recommend Frannie Walsh and Kathy Ferguson as members. And that would be until June 30th of...
Of this year.
This year?
No, it'd be next year, wouldn't it?
You're right, she needs to have this till the 18th.
Yeah.
Do you want to change it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll just change that and put my initials there. So I make that motion.
My second.
Okay, all those are...
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Force of habit, I am so sorry.
All right, so Dale, you want to, do you have anything to report?
Well, yeah, you wanted me to check on neighboring towns' policies on nonprofits. I checked everybody in our area, it's about 30 towns, and nobody has anything specifically for nonprofits. They issue large event, large event permits, small event permits, entertainment permits, none of them have anything to do with profit or nonprofit. And then if, you know, if a request comes in, like for an entertainment, usually it would come in, comes into like the town administrator, and then they notify, he or she notifies the police, fire, board, and someone come under the board. So I mean, whatever we have, I mean, we already have a lot of that in place under the Board of Health.
That's all I wanted.
And, I mean, you know, you could...
All right, well, thank you for checking.
And the other thing is that the company that has built the solar farm down there that was bouncing back the pilot, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, well, of course, now they, did it pass? Yes, it passed. The board can negotiate a, so now all they're, they want to do it like three weeks ago. So I have the information, the proposal coming in from them. I'll forward it to all of you.
Terrific.
And then you can sit down amongst yourselves, and after that, you can discuss it with them, because I think they're, I think they're a little low on what they're offering. It might first blush by it, but I'm not exactly sure, because all I've seen is the legalese, but none of the real nuts and bolts yet, so.
Okay.
I'll have that to you soon, and that's basically it for me.
What's the name of the company that...
Oh, God, I wish I could remember. I mean, I only know my email liaison there.
Actually, I think it's in a warrant.
I believe it is in the warrant, yeah. Whatever article, it was a special article. It was on the special, I mean.
What was in the special?
Right up front.
In the special.
Right up to the...
All right. Send to the, town, CEC Solar.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so they're going to get us a proposal?
Well, he's going to send the proposal over to me, their, their representative, and I've got to get the latest iteration. It came back, there's a couple of things that may have, the lawyers may want to change.
Okay, perfect.
It's in the works.
All righty. All right, Mark, what do we have for correspondence?
Correspondence. Okay, so, first of all, was an email trying to set up the date for the Montello Street discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the fellow involved is available on July 10th.
Perfect.
Wondering if that works for us. I think...
That's when Jim's available.
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we book him for six? And then she'll let the neighbors know.
What else do we have? So this is an email from Bree. It's noting that the townhouse staff is interested in knowing when the summer hours are going to start. And she notes that she's looked at the calendar and wonders if we wouldn't continue through June as, as usual, and then starting on July 3rd, that would be an off week, and then we'd go every other week. And she's hoping that we can discuss this tonight, so staff boards and committees will know in advance.
My only fear is we've got a lot to do.
I know, we do.
And we've got to get this screening committee going, and the consultants hired, so, you know, I don't, I don't know if we're going to be able to meet every other week.
So if we don't have every other, if we just have every week, what, what's the effect on the staff? And what...
Well, and this is a tricky issue. I think we ran into some stickiness last time.
Yeah, they kind of count on following your lead for every other week during the...
But it's only...
But that doesn't preclude us from feeling like we have work to do and coming in.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it goes...
Right, they can meet every other week, or have night office hours.
I assume what they, they want to close the, the treasurer's office, right?
Yeah, that's probably...
And the town clerk.
And town clerk. They generally follow the meeting schedule that the selectmen have, but again, they don't necessarily have to do that. And the town clerk especially, because the town clerk's an elected position, she could just not show up.
Yeah.
Well...
Until the next election, and it would be an issue. So she'll probably stay open on regular hours as well, and I think the treasurer's department will, but they may. I mean, it gets a little slower during the summer for some of these offices, so I'm not sure it's a real problem. But you are right, you've got, you've got, you've got a full plate this summer. As a board, you've got a full plate.
Yeah, we do.
I'm in favor of meeting, quite frankly.
I think we need to meet every week.
I'm fine with the meeting every week. I think there is the separate subject of the other departments. That treasurer in particular, now this is probably three years ago, but, you know, I think we considered staying open every Monday, and she was having one or no people come in.
Right, I think we just say, let them go to summer hours.
Okay.
Right, and we'll continue to meet.
So...
And I think Bree's got the right time.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's perfect.
Okay, so...
We just need, when do we pick up?
I mean, we won't meet the 3rd, we probably won't meet the week of the 3rd, but we'll go every other week, so they'll start summer hours then, the week of the 3rd.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that for staff boards and committees, they can go to summer schedule every other week, starting with July 3rd being off.
For July and August, right.
And that'll be for July and August.
Right, for July and August.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yeah, that's good, I like that.
All right. This next one, we, that is the Board of Selectmen, received, maybe others as well, this email today from the Assistant Assessor. And this is about digital, funny word here, orthophotography project. I sort of inadvertently got involved in this, and what her email says is that this project is available. Apparently, the Board of Selectmen voted early this year to support the project with available funds. What has happened along the way is it isn't going to get done in this fiscal year. The project is going to happen maybe next March, before the leaves come out on the trees. There was apparently a bunch of other towns that joined in, it's going to make it a little cheaper. Here's the issue, apparently, and again, I just sort of inadvertently got in the middle of this. It was originally thought that money might be available this year, possibly out of building and ground.
Right.
The assessor said to me, well, look, is that going to be bringing forward into the next fiscal year? And the answer would be no. I went to the town accountant today just to ask about this and get this thing going, and actually, the Assistant Assessor came in at the same time, and Barbara was feeling like that wouldn't be a source of funds that really could be used for this. Long story made much shorter, great project, great thing to happen, we don't have any funding at this point. If by chance there were a special town meeting, that might be a time, but we'll have to keep an eye out.
How much is the money?
Pardon?
How much is the money?
The, the actual orthophotography is about $7,000. There are probably $2,000 or $3,000 more in yearly software stuff, so we may be looking at $8,000 or $9,000.
When that first started in the early 90s, it was a quarter of a million dollars to do a town.
Wow.
Just to give you an idea of where the technology's gone.
The price has really come down.
Yeah. And it, at that price, it's over $10,000. I mean, you want to consider the option of at that price, it is...
It's not over $10,000, right?
Well, it's not really a capital expense, so I guess I'm...
No.
It doesn't come under capital, and it really doesn't come under building and grounds technically.
I suggest, the software or the technology part, I think we can do through the technology. We could even do it maybe through the grant. They gave us the money, when I asked them, you know, did you sign it specific? They said, no, you got $16,000. We're doing the exchange, we're doing the software for the town clerks, and we've met their parameters. We're still going to have about $12,000 to $14,000, even after we've done everything we said we wanted to do?
That's perfect.
This might be a, so the $2,000, I think we can get out of the IT. The $7,000 probably doesn't qualify, but it would seem to me that this is important enough, we could go to the finance committee for reserve.
Mm-hmm.
It also is pretty, it also could qualify under, you know, without going into reserve, because it's still IT. I mean, the finished product of this after the flyover is it's tied to...
It's technology.
It's tied to a tech program that is really a good program, I mean...
From everything you've told us, I think we have to be in this, and so we shouldn't let where the money goes and what bucket stop us, and...
It does an amazing bump for new growth in one year. I'll leave it at that.
I totally agree, and I think we just have to keep our eye open, knowing where...
So let me talk to Barbara a little more, and maybe she can go back to the Department of Revenue if necessary, just to see where we can do this.
And when does this money have to be spent for the IT grant? Do you know?
No, it's, once they give it to us, it's ours. It doesn't, it goes in, it's not a budget line item, so it doesn't close out at the end of every fiscal year.
Okay.
It just stays.
Okay. And there's, there's no deadline, because with Collins Center, we had to have a plan in place by June 30th of this year.
Right, which brings up this, because this is the document. I asked Dale to review this so we can sign it. It's got to be in by June 9th.
Okay.
And I...
It's pretty cut and dry. Actually, you're the, you're the point man on that. You're signing, you're signing most of it.
Okay, so where do I sign?
Well, you sign, hang on.
Right there.
Do I have to?
That would be great if we could use that money for that.
Not one there.
I mean, it makes sense.
That's yours to sign, and then...
But is it under, it's, it's under the town of Plimpton, though, isn't it?
Right, yeah, right. The town of Plimpton is the contractor. And, but in this case, they're looking, in this case, they're looking for, in this case, what they're looking for is a person's name, so that would be you. You would check it as an individual, full legal authorization of, or individual name, organization, and then they have a DBA, and then authorized signatories, this is the board signs here.
Do we need all board members?
Well, that would mean any of those signatures, we could all sign it.
Yeah, that would be you. And then...
I'd like to put the accountant on there, too.
And then this is the signature.
Why don't we just authorize you to sign it, and you guys, you can work this out with Barbara, yeah?
And then this is the, the actual contract. This is the standard state form of contract.
And I have to sign it, yeah.
And that's, yeah, you're going to sign it, you're going to sign it right there. But the, because if you look, it's all in here, contract, contractor's legal name is the town of Plimpton.
So that's what we'll go on here.
It's all sort of in here, yeah, and that answers how you get into the back.
Okay, okay, so...
Well, I mean, we already voted and applied for it, now we just want it, so it's just signing it.
But just so we have it.
All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize John Trainer to sign the Community Compact IT grant with the town accountant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
An email from Colleen Thompson, former selectman. Hi, Bree, I just wanted to thank you and the committee for all your work in organizing yesterday's event, that is, the Memorial Day Parade Ceremony. Despite the rain, the parade and the ceremony, the town green were very nice, went smoothly. Thanks again. Please be sure to thank all the other members of the committee.
That was nice.
I think maybe that will come up again in our rants.
Who was that from?
Colleen.
Colleen Thompson. This is a letter from the Massachusetts Bay Constables Association, the president of the association, informing us that there is a bill in the House of Representatives, 2252, which would strip away most of the powers of municipal constables. And so he is asking other town, state officials to speak to their representatives about how thoughtless and misguided and without justification this legislation is. There's a little note attached from Tara. The town of Plimpton only uses constable for election purposes, the posting of warrants. They were added to wage and personnel rates last year in case we wanted to try to save money to use a constable instead of police details. I tell people to use the Plumouth County Sheriff's Department to serve papers. So just to let us know that bill is out there. It doesn't really describe the motivation of the person who sponsored this bill to limit constable powers. Suppose if any of us feel strongly, we have the opportunity of speaking with our representatives about it. Eversource, a letter of May 8th, noting that we had received a letter in December about the continued applying of herbicides along the power line right-of-way, and asking us, or any of the recipients, to let them know if there are additional sensitive areas that they should know about. This one, I think we covered last time. It's about 150 county roads, so I think we've hit that. This is the Board of Selectmen Warrants Signed List, new to me. Am I going down this list?
Yes.
Will rounded-up numbers do, or...
It will.
Okay. Eversource, 1300, Verizon, 400, Local Computer, 1900, Borhec Insurance, 100, Custodial Supply, 100, Comcast, 100, Belmont, Belmont Springs, $10, and US Borac copiers, $450, Schools, Town Payroll, $4,600.
You know, we shouldn't have to pay for water. Maybe I'll save that in my rant and read.
I...
All right, anything else?
With great glee, do I report that that completes correspondence?
I have one or two things.
Okay, what do you have?
Town meeting improved the budget, which means we can, for the fire department, we'll have 15 hours of clerical. So we asked Barbara, Warren and I met with Barbara, to discuss, is there a job description for clerical? It turns out, she didn't have one. We suggested that Warren go to the other fire chiefs in the towns that are but us and get a job description, so that's going to take place. We're not going to be hiring this person until July 1st, because it's the new budget, but at least we get it posted, and we know what we're looking for. Just for information.
Great, thank you.
The other thing is executive session minutes I sent out.
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to approve those?
Sure, yeah, we can, you can do the executive session minutes.
I actually did not look them over, because I assumed we'd approve them in executive session.
Well, we don't have to, we can approve them in open session, because they're not going to be released. But if you want, we can hold it until next week.
I'm so sorry, I will look at them for next week.
Okay. We don't have any minutes for this week if we're not going to do executive session, because Bree doesn't have the 5/8 done or the 5/22, so we'll hold the 5/23, and we'll get every, all the minutes done next week, so that we get current.
I had a couple things on dates to remember when we get there.
Sure, yep.
Which is, one, I'm, just to let you guys know, I sort of came into returning to the selectmen late, and so I did make several commitments that already, I, I will be away late, and so I did make several commitments that already, I will be away July 24th, September 11th. In late October, I will have to miss two or three Mondays.
Okay.
And just, just to let you know, the, this board will be in wonderful hands, maybe even better hands, without my presence, but it really is.
Sign them up for something.
I do take this seriously, and showing up to meetings is a really important piece of this.
It's important, yeah.
We've all been very good at that, but there are certain things that I just.
Sure.
So, somewhat relatedly, I had asked, I thought maybe that agenda-making be on this agenda. I don't know if we want to talk about it next week. Are you taking on that?
I was going to try to get Bree into taking over, doing the agenda. I was hoping she'd be here tonight. I thought we could stay after and talk about what, you know, what it entails.
I think that makes sense.
And if you guys are in agreement, I would like to kind of try to get this into her.
I'm okay with that. I think she has some hesitancy and feeling like we, during the week, talked to a lot of people and know a lot more about what needs to go on, so I, I think she has some, a fair amount of resistance. And I, I, I mean, I understand why you'd want to move that over to her, and I certainly support you on that. And I don't want to cloud the issue, but if she's really uncomfortable, and if it were a big burden on you, I'd be willing also to take that on.
Okay, well, thank you, Mark, I appreciate that.
But that's not to influence.
For me, it's, I mean, I always liked doing the agenda, but it was, years ago, Barbara Leo was, did the agenda, and we just told her what we wanted on the agenda, and she did it. So Bree has, was, it seemed like she was a little aggravated with me that I had done the agenda, but I did it because I knew she was crazy busy. So if, if she doesn't, that's fine. If she doesn't want to do the agenda, then, you know, we can continue.
I think she should, and I think maybe the way you could help is by being a review after it's done, before it gets to us.
And I, I mean, her, I think her big concern was mainly that, not knowing all the other things that were going on. And, I mean, the way we used to do, is, and you certainly did last week, is some preliminary agenda out on Monday or Tuesday to each of us and Dale, and simply saying, what else do you want on the agenda?
What else you have, exactly.
I, my understanding in the past has been that each of us can recommend anything, and at least go on. So that's what I know so far. Maybe we have to work on that some more next week.
Okay, yeah, let's work on it some more next week.
I mean, the key, of course, and I spent two and a half years on, every Thursday, living in dire fear that I would forget to get the darn thing to.
They posted.
Posted, and that's the key. And I, and that is one key, that both town clerk and assistant town clerk, we have to get it to both of them.
Right.
Whichever one of us.
Yeah, and I thought that I had sent it to him, and I didn't, so that worked out well, that, that it was done in time, and thankfully, they were able to get it posted.
So maybe that, maybe we need to work that through more.
Okay, all right, well, I'll, I'll do this one, because Bree's not here, and we've got a short week, because it's already Tuesday, and we have to have it posted by Thursday. So I'll put a tentative agenda together for you guys tomorrow for input, and then we'll, we'll get it squared away. And then, next week, we can start working with, with Bree, and see how we can, okay, perfect. All right, anything else before rants and raves?
Nope.
Okay, all right, do you want to start?
Sure. I've got a rave for the people who came to town meeting. And it's a little bit of a rant, too. It was, it's normally a four-hour town meeting, maybe once in a while we go over. This time, it was under three hours. And I think the people who turned out, they should be commended. For the people who don't, I think once a year is not too much to ask that you come to town meeting, because we really need your input. As moderator, there was nothing more exciting, in a sense, to hear somebody get up and talk about their concern, their issue, whether it was positive or negative. And when we don't have large crowds, we miss that. So I hope, again, a rave with a little bit of a rant.
Okay. My rave would be Memorial Day. What a great job the committee did. The turnout, despite the weather conditions, was awesome. It was really a great group of people that were there. The, the young woman that spoke was, must have been so difficult for her to do that, but it was so appreciated, and it really hit home and made people understand, you know, what Memorial Day is all about. And oh my gosh, I don't know if there was a dry eye in the house, but kudos to everybody that was involved. They did a really great job, and thank you very much. That's all I've got. No, no rant, just a rave.
Oh, just like you.
I know. A golden retriever.
So I'm not going to be very original, because my rave, and it'll be the best rave I have all year, is also Memorial Day. Looking out at that crowd from the gazebo, in the cold, in the wind, and the rain, and every single person attended. Magic, absolute magic. That's the most fun of being Selectmen, is once a year doing Memorial Day. Small town Americana at its very best, so magical. I think I'm giving myself goosebumps here. And my rant, I think, I'm going to say ditto to what John said. I, you know, I, people can complain and complain and complain, but if they have objections or ideas, town meeting is there. It's the forum to have those discussions. And the same time, having the meeting done in two and a half hours is pretty magical.
Oh my gosh, yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. Well, pure democracy, huh, town meeting?
Indeed, yeah.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for joining us, and we will be meeting again on Monday at 6:00. And on the agenda so far, we're going to have John Williamson and Jason Fraser to discuss the establishment of school stabilization account, and then some other items that are carried over from today, so we'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Yay.